Um. Pam Malam started the collective, I would like to say we're very excited to hear what happened with Pam. Um, but we've got somebody else that took over the lease for that, which is at the area at the adult center that we had pottery done. And so now they're utilizing that for collective art. Um, and then of course we have disabled and which we just had somebody move in with two new horses and one that's the same for you guys. Which I think it just talked about, which is basically trying to get this together now. Um, but yes, so at the end, I based all the costs that I have here on our past year. I used it on the past year and I didn't use it on the prior years because I've noticed since I've been here, income fluctuates based on the pool. And that's the biggest thing. If we have no water in our pool, we do lose income because people don't want to be here. They love the pool. And that's just a pure factual observation. Um, so I based this on last year and this year because we did get water right away this year, not as quickly. But we are on the same climate as we were last year. Um, and so with that said, year to date, I project that we're going to make thirty six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars in our venue rentals. Do you have any questions on that? And yes, sir.
That, so that includes the hotel function?
No, the motel is separate. This is just the rentals that we, the buildings.
What, what I'm, what I'm asking is the prior statement before venue rentals was that we're on the upward projection? Because we have our pool running, so I'm asking if that statement includes normal hotel revenue.
It would if we didn't have to talk to, uh, to us off now.
Right, that's.
Yes, yes. So you're correct. Any of our vendors, any income that we bring really is, is aged toward our pool. And that, and that's just an observation and I've been observing it and you, would you agree, Chris? As I see your smile.
Say what?
I, you agree.
I think it's taken a while. No, that wasn't even.
Oh, I thought maybe you might have some, maybe I didn't know and I thought I'd ask.
Right.
And by the way, thank you for all your help. Alright, so we're gonna go to the next one. We're gonna go to events. Um. So our events, um, I listed, you know, what we've been doing, what has worked really well. Um, and this is income that we receive from it. Our biggest events, um, obviously are the fall festival. Um, the farmer's market, which we're gonna revend that and do that more in the cooler time because the commissary is hotter in the summer. And so we're gonna move it to a cooler time. I think we'll get more people to come because people just loved coming to it. Um, and then our fall festival. Um, we're gonna be doing the haunted house. We had those tours on there because we did, um, do a lot of the, uh, help last year, volunteer help last year. We have Labor Day, Memorial Day, New Years, and we did put wild game dinner because our hunting has been going so well. I didn't put a amount in there, but we would really like to do a wild game dinner. Um, I can't promise. I would like to try it. Uh, because we've got great volunteers that would love to put something like this together. So more to come on that, but our events don't bring in a lot of money, but they're there for our members to have a good time. And to be a community and to meet other people and to get out of the house and to do things that maybe other HOAs may not do. Um, and bring kids out and new families and just visitors so that they can see how much fun it is to be here, other than the beautiful history that we have. And maybe make somebody wanna, you know, buy an FRM or buy a home or buy a lot. So these are some of the things because it's basically an event is marketing us. And it's showing, hey, we are awesome. And so that's why I have these in there. Not a big amount of money, but it's sixty nine hundred dollars. Now, that's just an estimate. Remember, these are all estimates. They could be more. Um, but I'm just letting you know and reminding everybody, these are estimates based on the past year, prior year. Our next one is our golf course. And as you can see, um, these are the income of what we have. We have our park rentals. We have golf course merchandise. We are planning on doing more in-house tournaments because in-house tournaments will bring us more money. Because the money will come to us, even though other people have tournaments and they reap some of that money from the tournaments that they do. They still do pay us to use the golf course for those tournaments. But we do wanna have more tournaments ourselves, um, and bring more people in and make it more fun. Um, we have food sales. We project our food sales to go up more because it seems to be a hit out there, which I'm so excited. Um, and then of course we have to show our sales tax that we collect. We do have to get that back out. We have the golf course storage units and then we have trail fees and membership. We're working on trying to increase our memberships. Um, we have the lost moss room, which is a rentable room, which is absolutely beautiful out there because when the creek is flowing. There's no other pretty area than the patio and that lost moss room out there. So we do have people that rent that. And then of course the green fees where we made most of our money was on the green fees. So income, hundred twenty five thousand four hundred and twenty one. Does anybody have questions on that? So our next one is hunting tracking. Um, it's a one liner because basically it's, this is all people that come in to hunt access. Because we have hunting all, all year long access. And, um, up to November, I believe we start in September to November for whitetail. And we have people that come all over to hunt down here. These people that come, so you know, also rent at the motel, which brings in more income. This amount here does not include the hotel. This is pure, I'm paying to hunt day by day, whether it's an FRM or just a visitor. That is what we brought in year to date is hundred fifteen thousand dollars. So it, it's a very, i- i- it has held us up on some of the tight spots that we had because we didn't have water. And with the motel being closed on the upper floor, um, this helped us, um, carry some of those losses. That makes sense. Um, and I project that we'll make more, but I'm projecting, I'm not gonna say it, um. I can project more, but I don't know when this season is gonna be like next year. So I'm being conservative. That's what I'm gonna say, based on what we did last year. Um, motel income, so our motel income, um, for year to date, based on last year's amount, um, two hundred and five thousand nine hundred and sixty eight. We have the motel tax and the room rental. Um, hopefully, when our hotel is fully functional again, that number will go up. Because I have seen it higher, but we may even be able to increase the rates once it's off. Which I think it's gonna be a lot. I'm excited about it. Any questions on that? Alright, um, real estate. And obviously this is our lot sales, our permits for architecture and transfer fees when people transfer their lots or they do give backs. Um, to altogether, you know, our real estate, we've sold three thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars. Um, and then our real estate and then in lot sales, we've sold twenty three thousand nine hundred and forty three. We're working on increasing that, but based on our average, um, for last year compared to what we're gonna do is forty four thousand three hundred and fifty seven dollars. Excuse me. So then our next one is RV park. Um, we have, we have a laundry mat there and it does bring in income, but it's random. So it's not something that I would put in there as a budget because it is random. But when we do receive that, that will be income added that you will see. It's just not something that you can predict, uh, who's gonna be changing wash the washer bowl. And I wanted to put it there because that's something that we do have out there that isn't. Yes, Chris?
Um, is the laundry mat available to the membership or just to the RV?
Available to the membership.
I think you are.
What?
You ought to put that in the dispatcher. And let people know that, you know, for example, my wife comes to do work. Or wash it and go. So in the meantime, she's always there amusing. But I think over the years, most people believe that the laundry mat is pretty far.
Well, our memberships have memberships for every member and that would include that. And we only have two washers and dryers. So if they're not being moved by the RV park, obviously our members can use it. They have to pay. I don't know what the cost is, but yes.
I'm just saying that, I don't think people realize that they can use it if they.
I'll, I'll let them know. I can put that on, not the bottom. It's all for the homeowners. Um, and then so our site rentals, um, we brought in a hundred ninety four thousand three hundred and thirteen. And then we do have our tents, um, which is primitive, a beautiful area though, but for people that, and pop-ups can go out there because they're small. So we have a pickup that has a pop-up from that. You can also use that as well. So between all of that and also they've been selling food out there once a month to increase revenue and to give some people that are at the RV park, um, some, uh, another option for having food. Um, I, I could go into other stuff that would be great. I'll do it, but I'll do that one channel next week. Okay, but altogether, uh, our RV park brought in two thousand, two hundred thousand fourteen dollars. And then other sales, obviously this is just miscellaneous things that come in through our credit card and credit card income. Um, which brings in about forty six thousand four hundred and eighty three. And then we've got our land sale, um, which we bring in two seventy or more a month. It's two seventy every time we dump there. And so we have a contract with Bracketville, so they do dump at the landfill and they pay us two hundred and seventy dollars every time they dump at our landfill. And that amount has been, we've made six thousand thirty six dollars for the year, overall for the year, what I'm projecting. So total income, all that I told you, would be two million, two hundred and thirty seven thousand nine hundred and seventy seven dollars. And then you have your costs of goods. So these are things that you subtract from your total income because they are costs and expenses that we sell that we have to put in this area. So RV car food, food purchases, merchant fees, and then of course that is fifty nine thousand nine hundred and sixty six dollars. So our total gross income is two million, one hundred and seventy eight thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. That's the projection. Okay, so now we're gonna go into the fun stuff or the not so fun stuff, expenses. So our marketing expenses. So. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Any question?
Yes. That sentence lost Morris. I have another budget to show you for that.
Okay.
Totally separate corporation. We own it, but it's, it's its own corporation. Yes.
Um, how much is this compared to last year's income?
It's around, I would say it's about a five percent increase. Yeah, about that. Yes, ma'am.
So the merchant fees, the credit card, what is that?
So merchant fees and credit cards are what we have to pay the merchants for using their credit card, uh, processing.
Okay, so that's the process. Yes, that's not interest on the credit card.
No, no, we don't, we don't process it. Yeah, the merchant.
I just wash this right out.
Yes.
Doesn't, why would, why would the Ford pay merchant fees if I use my credit card? Don't I get charged extra to pay that merchant fee?
No, the merchant pays it.
Yeah.
We have.
But it comes out of something I've already paid, right?
Like for example, for example, building, every time you pay in there, it charges two point nine nine percent. And they give that to us, but then we have to pay it back to them at the end of the month. So the merchant always pays the fees.
Okay.
They never pass it to the customer.
But the customers charge the extra fee.
They are charged, but then we have to give.
Yes, I got you. Got you, got it.
Since the audience is sitting asking questions, uh, I'd like to give them a microphone to pass around. So that, so that the Zoom, the people watching can bring all those questions. I just asked with great power, great responsibility, please. Thanks to my responsibility.
Thank you, Aaron.
Just put on the seat, Rachel.
Is this mic working too?
It is really.
If you wanna get up and use it like you can, if you wanna get your shacks in, or you can just, you can just pass it around. This one's a little bit easier to hear on. Um, any other questions before I go ahead and move on to the expenses? So some feedback, I'm gonna ask feedback. Um, and on the, um, income portion, was it detailed enough for you?
Yes.
Okay, is that what you've been looking for?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, expenses gonna be a lot more detailed than this because we have a lot of expenses. So put your seatbelts on. Alright, um, marketing. We've done very well in marketing this year. We've got our name out there. Um, I believe more so than in a long time. I've had people come up to me and say, oh, I didn't even know that you guys were here. That we could come on there and, and we're gonna continue doing that marketing because we need to market this beautiful place to people. So they can come and bring us some money. That's what we want. So we have media signage, banners, we have to have that, we have to promote our fall festivals. Um, we have four part days. We help donate the signage for that. There are things that we help each other with to promote the board. Um, we have constant contact. That's what I use every day to get the information out to all of our members per email. But I will tell you this, is if you decline and do not want to have constant contact, uh, email to you to get the communication, you won't be able to use it again. They won't let you. You'll have to have a new email. I've tried that because people have canceled them.
I had a comment on that. So one point, a member wanted to get the dispatch. And then there's possible to create a contact form to where you can go and put their email in. I've spent several hours on the phone with constant contact on to do that. So there is a way to get someone back in by setting up a contact form on our website or wherever else where they can resubscribe. And it will allow them to get back into subscription. It overrides that, but that's the only way. They can't fix it. We can't fix it. It has to be from a form.
Okay.
But it's possible.
Thanks. I, I did not know that. Thank you, Jason. I appreciate that because it is a lot of work because I have to talk to them and email. Let's do that.
I set it up and then whoever was managing goes, who added this? Someone hacked our account, deleted all the stuff I put in there. So now we don't have that anymore. But maybe I'll find out if you really need that.
Okay, well, fun time boots. Okay, so then, um, and I use constant contact all the time. I, and I'm sure every single one of you here have gotten the information. Eventually, that communication goes through building, um, but we just have to figure out a way that a member won't get more than one uh, email for the same day a day. We haven't gotten that far yet. So we'll continue with constant contact until we can figure that out. Um, with relations, this is another thing that, um, may not have been done for a while, but we are part of Chamber of Commerce in Del Rio. We are part of it in Bracket and we are part of it in Bali, which again, they, they also market for us. They, um, have our little pamphlets at the Chamber of Commerce. We let them know what they have here. And it's a good relationship that we have with them to do that. Um, dues and subscriptions. This is multiple things that we have. Now I put it here, but we actually haven't broken down in other areas. And so right now our dues is only fifteen dollars and that's for the Texas monthly, none marketing. Um, Adobe software, Canva, uh, those things are used for flyers. They're used to make, um, so we don't have to, uh, any people to do it. Uh, which our people are producing some really nice, um, marketing flyers for that. And it's not just flyers. We can produce brochures. We can produce pamphlets, whatever we need. And if our members need that, you're welcome to ask us and they'll do it for you for free. And, and then of course, because I broke things down in every single area, um, gross pay federal income tax, Medicare, social security is on there. But it's not really a department. Now, will we break that down? Because marketing expense for, um, the employee is in the admin right now. We would have, um, have to work on that to break that out. I broke it out in the other areas, but this one was a little bit, um, more challenging. So I left it blank for right now, but it is in our budget. Um, under regular payroll, uh, in admin. Um, but eventually it will be broke out. So you can see where the marketing expense for that also goes as well. Yes, ma'am.
If you, uh, use the, uh, rolling billboard of the civic center, are you on there?
Where?
At the civic center.
Bill, you gotta use the mic, Bill. You gotta use the mic. I can't play Phil Donahue, I'm sorry.
No, the, you know, the billboard that they have beyond, uh, Shapless Civic Center?
Um, I'm sure that Andreas needed something out there. Yes, we're also working on, on one, um, with Dow. Then it brought up to the board. We haven't, you know, discussed it any, in any more length, but we will to get that to the people in Del Rio. But I'm sure the lettuce, because it's part of the table.
Yeah, well, that's, that was the reason I was asking.
Yeah, good question. Um, so any questions on the marketing expense? I did cut it last year, um, just so you know. Last year it was about twenty four thousand and we cut it down to two twenty. And, uh, when I do the second round of this to cut expenses, there may be more that may be cut out of that expense. So line will be black. Just so you know, all of these expenses that I'm gonna be talking about today is what we, what I projected that we need. But based on the bottom line, I obviously am going to have to cut expenses. But I need everybody to see the true picture of what it really costs to run the place. Um, and of course, we're gonna have the cut to make and see if that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. So our next one is the events that we have. We've had Easter, which is always a great hit, Simple Mile. Fourth of July, I'm gonna say is our biggest. And this year was absolutely amazing. The fireworks, I got, frankly, if you're wrong, but I think they're the best fireworks I've seen that I've ever been to. I hope all of you were able to enjoy that. Um, we're gonna keep continuing that and the sponsors and the vendors that donated and the members to make that happen didn't cost us anything. So I think everybody's with that. Um, again, the farmer's arts and market, uh, Labor Day, we have the haunted house, fall festival, Christmas, Valentine's Day, uh, before election. So we have supplies. And then of course, again, I did put in the gross pay federal income tax, Medicare and social. Um, we do have an events person, but again, that person is in the admin. Okay. So costs, projected costs for the year is one thousand three hundred and forty nine dollars. Um, the biggest cost is the Fourth of July because of the fireworks. But normally, we usually have that paid for through sponsorships and vendors. Um, but I have to put it there just in case that falls through. So you, so you all know what it costs. Okay, moving on to admin, which I admit is probably one of our biggest expenses other than maintenance. Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Alright, alright, so office expenses. So we have Indeed is where we, um, do our job openings. Um, which is in delivery. You're gonna see this right here. That is when we do our elections. It costs that much for us to mail out all of the ballots. Um, email is through GoDaddy. Uh, that's what it costs us on a yearly basis to use that. It also includes Microsoft with that. So based on the plan that you get per employee, most of the the ones that have the full package, as you showed myself and the executive secretary and our employees just have their, they don't have just emails. I don't know if you know, but. Okay, then computer supply, this is, you know, paper toner. Um, we do have a lease, so really we don't have paper to toner. Uh, this is more for, you know, just equipment or services. Computer software, um, is also in there. And then there's our copy lease. So that's what we pay for our lease on a monthly basis. They come out and serve us for free. Uh, they will send us toner for that, but of course they don't, uh, give us paper and all of that other good stuff. So we have to supply that ourselves.
So can I ask something? So we see computer software there. Where is, uh, the ten grand for building them and?
I'm not there yet.
Oh.
Standby.
Standby.
Not moving.
It's all there. Yes.
I'm sure you're saying it. It's not in admin. Bill, Billium is not?
It, it is.
Oh, it's just.
Um, I haven't gotten that yet.
Gotcha.
Okay, well, I told you this is pretty detailed. So miscellaneous, we always have miscellaneous items that come up that it might not have accounted for. Um, and so I put that in there, um, just to cover us in case we need something. Because we do run, uh, we do a lot of it. We, you know, members that want some copies, you know, because that does cost money. So we put miscellaneous in there to cover things like that. A D P, this is what we use, um, for our payroll. And this is what it costs us on a monthly basis to use that service. Um, they, they file and take out all the taxes. Um, there, they do a multiple multitude of things in there. Um, reemployment, drug testing. It is good to randomly do that every so often. Sometimes that's not a good thing, but we do need to understand that, you know, people have to know that, hey, when you're working, you have to be able to pass these things. Even though we do, when we hire, we do background checks. Um, and on employee handbook, it does say we can do random drug testing. Licenses and fees.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The mic please. The mic please.
Is that for everybody?
No. I, this is for three people, uh, three, four people at a time. And so last year I had all the security tested. Um, and this year I'll pick a department and probably have all them tested. It's quite expensive. They have all of us tested for that. So I do it, my goal is to do a department for a year or four two.
So that, so that excludes certain people.
No, it's for all the employees that I do.
You have employees.
Yes, yes. And volunteers. We have, we didn't do drug testing for volunteers, but we do background checks on them.
And, uh, does that include the board too or?
No, it does not. It does say in the declaration, they are not required to go through a background check.
Rich, real, real quick regarding the board. Before we, uh, when we apply to become a board member, we, we indicate on a sheet of paper whether or not we meet the requirements. And one of them is not to have a felony conviction. So, um, the process could change, but right now is, it's, it's on the honor system. I don't have a felony conviction and that's what I put on my paper when I became, when I decided to run for the board.
And you're elected.
And we're elected.
Yeah. I would think that the insurance, the insurance have any requirements on drug testing?
No.
Go ahead.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I, I wanna jump in on typical drug testing policy as, uh, as experienced, uh, by me. Um, usually drug, drug testing policy has to do with operating heavy equipment. Um, not necessarily other jobs, professional jobs, I would say. Uh, I've not been subject to a drug test in my professional career. However, my pre-professional career, uh, places like Everett, Tiffel, et cetera, as a teenager, that's where I experienced the whole of drug testing problem. But, uh, just to be clear on standard policies for drug testing for employees.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to that because at my old job, I, they could randomly test anybody. Now they automatically have to test you when you get in an accident. And it doesn't matter whether you operate big machinery or not, you automatically have to have a drug test to make sure that you weren't under any influence whatsoever.
Right, but this should, yeah, it's typically a big corporate policy.
You know.
Right. Right, it is, yes.
Yeah. And I'll, and I'll like, which Charles says, I retired from the federal system, the federal probation office for twenty-five years. And if we were, we were subject to doing random drug tests on a regular basis, then that was a professional sin.
Um, okay, so, you're gonna see some highlighted things in the administration. And what I would like to um explain to you are the four items that I have highlighted are the biggest expense that we have. And that is auto insurance, general liability, our property insurance, and our property taxes. With that said, that comes down to four hundred and seven thousand dollars just for those four items. It's a lot of them. Um, so with that said, our, our insurance is forty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-year. General liability with a ten percent increase because that's what the insurance told me that they would probably replace our insurance this year to ten percent. It could be fourteen percent. Um, yes, ma'am?
Oh. You, you drawn out copies of this?
I can email it to you, or you can have my copy, I don't need it.
Well, that's okay. I mean, can I just go up to the office and get some more?
No, this is on my computer. If you want mine, I don't need it, I have it.
Here, here. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so the next one is the general liability, and that's for case employees were to not be happy when maybe something they worked out and they no longer work for us, or they were terminated. Uh, it's also for the directors, um liability as well. And that a year is projected to be ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for that. Our property insurance is projected, and that's inside and outside of our building, so you know, so if anything were to happen, we do have a um can be or um deductible. Uh, that we have to pay, but this is for anything that happens to, if anything comes on the board, anything that happens to the building. And we do have them uh coming to give us a estimate next week on Saturday on our board meeting. Uh, to let us know with all the information that I had to provide this week or last week to them, so they can make that um that amount for us. Um, and that's right now is at a hundred and thirty-four, one seventy-three. Um. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, maybe get into the weeds. So, when you say that the insurance covers inside and outside the building, so is it covered, is this on common property as well?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So everything owned by the board?
Hmm?
Everything owned by the?
Yes, ma'am. That's why it's so high, but I, I don't know if it's necessarily as high as, as big as the board is, but did you have a question?
Well, I should, you don't mind.
I just have a question on insurance or in teaching. If you had safety meetings, would you get a priority on insurance? If you took, if you had offensive driving done by people who use a vehicle, would you get a priority on insurance?
It's a good question. We can ask our insurance on Saturday next weekend.
Oh, I have a question.
She had one, she ain't come up here.
Okay, um, one quick question, the general liabilities line includes the records, is that, does that include D and O insurance for the directors?
It's me that?
The, you know, directors, the D and O insurance, which is usually my experience, a different policy with customers. Directors and executives.
I don't know the D and O.
D and O insurance.
We have that same, the grand deductible, maybe twenty-five.
Sure.
Yeah.
D and O insurance is in a different policy than general liability that has D and O.
D and O is an acronym for what?
Directors and officers.
Yes, that's what it is, directors and officers, yes.
Um, so, so that's included in what I know?
Yes.
Um, and then, these numbers have, I guess it's projected, but it looks like the same amount as last year. So you've got the ten percent increase on the front page, but that's not listed in the budget, so these are probably going to increase the budget.
Yes. And, um just, I just wanna put it out there again, that's a, that's an estimate. And so, once we have all the information and I rework the expenses, and then I will present it to the board, they can look at it, and then to the board, usually we'll do this on a, we'll do that to the numbers, however that works.
Okay, which is, so, like that, that seems to indicate that those are a large fine items in admin, it's not like it ten percent increase.
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I can hear you.
If, if these numbers increase by ten percent, that, that's an increasing expenses for this.
Sure, it will. All right, and legal, legal fees, this is based on what we paid on the prior year. Um, now, it could be less, it could be more, I'm saying I feel that it'll be in line with what we spent or less. Um, that's my bridge, my prediction. We have to use um the legal uh costs like we were doing when I first got here, and it's slowed down quite a bit, so I don't presume it to be over this at all. Again, things can happen, you don't know the future, and so this is what the estimate is.
Um. Legal fees, we, so, we have a pending litigation, so why would you not accept those increases?
As again, this, as a, okay?
Okay.
All right. Tax protests, that's on there. Here we go, this is what we have so far. And again, I believe that John Wiley said he would get in touch with you and give me more information. On that, on auditor, we did um engage with Hawkins, Chris Hawkins.
Okay.
Uh, this is what they told us it was going to cost uh for their services to give us another year of property. So, anybody have any questions on that? Uh, tax filing, this is where it's cost us to file our taxes. So I have it on there, um board meals, I have that on there. This is normally what we have. Sorry, I'm just being detailed, but
That's.
I know I get a lot of flack from some people, but at the end of the day, here, here's, here's my thoughts, and if the board wants to change, then that's fine. We spend hours, they spend hours, and they come here and volunteer. I don't think lunch is that affordable to expect for them to be able to eat lunch, because they don't get to eat until five, six o'clock. I think that's a reasonable thing. Okay, I appreciate that, because they do a lot of work on the side that people don't even realize all the time, and, I'm sorry.
I just wanna make a point that the board cannot vote on giving ourselves film, because there's a conflict of interest.
So you want me to take that out?
Silly, no, I'm just saying, we can't, we can't make that decision. I vote for the martyr rate issue, we fired up.
There you go.
I'll, I will change it to meals.
Yeah.
All right. Um, building, eleven thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars a year. That's, that's it. Does anybody have any questions on that? All right. Name tags training. People lose name tags, people need to be training. We did some customer service training this year, which was amazing. Um, my staff learned a lot from that customer training, and they had never had it. Um, so, bank and trust came down, because we banked with them, they gave us, making here to do the free training. And I was thanked by every single employee that took that training. And hopefully, they will utilize what they learned, because I think it's very important. I don't think people get enough customer service training. Uh, so I think having that done once a year is vital to be able to deal sometimes with people that are unhappy, um angry, and it teaches them ways to talk to people to kind of mitigate the situation at the time. So, I was, I'm very, I was very happy there, but.
I think that you have an amazing office. They are very friendly and very helpful to you.
Oh.
And, uh, I just thought I should say that because, um, I always enjoy talking to people.
That is all, they try and do very best. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. We don't really hear that very often. Okay, so, I appreciate that, without my part. Um, so our next one is pool bracelets. Now, we'll probably put that over on the pool area, but I needed to put it in there. Um, because we do have to identify people down by the pool when they are swimming. Uh, so that's what that cost is on a, on a yearly basis, about three hundred dollars. Now, if the cost of goods go up, it might be more, but that's what I'm projecting right now. Um, this is what it costs for our book software on a monthly basis. And then, here is the people that are on here that we broke out, um, and I will say, Travis worked with me on this budget, and I also had, um, I had two people working with me, Lisa Dale, because there's things in with books that she needed to teach me how to input the budget in there. And then Travis worked with me on this, and we worked through the details. Um, he made this spreadsheet as a matter of fact. Yes, he made this spreadsheet, an amazing job. I'm not that knowledgeable in, in this deep of Excel. I know enough to get it short, that's it. He did a fantastic job. I, I couldn't thank him enough. He, he's a whiz at it. Um, now, he says better than I am, and I learned some stuff from her this week when I was, I compared both of them. I, because when I did this presentation, I wanted to have information from both people to make sure that I had everything correct in here. And they both balanced. And that made me very happy, so, um, it made me confident to be able to present this to you all um this way. So, when Travis and I worked on this, we, all of the people that are in the administration here in the payroll, it's myself, Bill, Matt, all the people in the motel. They put, um, my admin and events over there, would be Andreas and Cassie and Vanessa. Those who are on, and on the housekeepers are in this payroll under administration. So, we broke it out, that detail. Um, now, can we break it up? Oh, you know what? I lied. Um, wait till I get down to the motel, maybe I have the motel, sorry. But hopefully, this gives you an idea of what the expenses also are, other than just other home outs that we have on there, and the utilities.
Wouldn't it make sense to have both the map and the security budget and the maintenance budget and the marketing person?
Yeah, I've already talked about that, so I just didn't have time to do all that.
Um.
I, I will do it, but this took a lot of time to get from what it was before. Do we need to break it out more? Yes. Uh, and what I will say is one thing that Travis and I talked about is, um, our meters. Actually, the department has an electrical meter and a water meter. And so we are going to break it down per department on what meter goes to what department, so we can have those meter numbers on there, which will tell us, we can go out and read this, and we'll know exactly, oh, that meter goes to D and O. That's gonna take some time to do, but that's what we're working on, so we know what meters go to what uh department. Yes, sir.
Is QuickBooks, is it gonna go away now that we have built?
No. QuickBooks is for all of the income that comes in that's not assessments. All of our bills, they're not in Bill Bium at all. Our assessments probably are in Bill Bium.
Yeah, for in the long view.
Maybe in the near future, but I don't, I can't give you that answer right now, because I haven't looked that much in depth into Bill Bium yet.
My opinion is that Bill Bium is mainly for property management, and it does not have the robust accounting system that QuickBooks does. And since we have such diverse business with the motel and RV park and all these other business units, it's probably too much for that. It should be very nice for getting assessments, collective member dues, this kind of paying traffic membership information, but as far as trying to cram everything you do in there, probably gonna lose something that we can get with books, so. At first, I thought that would be a fantastic idea, but probably, probably not, probably not.
Um, and then, of course, so you can see, utilities in here are directly toward the admin. Um, I have the property taxes in there. Eventually, we would like to take the property taxes and put it to the right department, because this is as a whole. It can be broken down per department, so we know what I'm, I'm not working per department. That's in the works. So there's more detail coming, but it will take some more time and work together there, and eventually, once all that's broken out, whoever comes in should be able to use this template just like that, and be able to follow into QuickBooks, if that's still the same platform we're using. Um, so any questions on admin, because that whole including utilities and payroll comes out to nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Maintenance, we all know maintenance is a big expense because we've got big items, because we've got big machinery. So we have the landscape contractor to serve maintenance, so that is in there. We have maintenance repairs, cleaning supplies, they do clean once in a while. Um, exterminating contract goes in there, because it's also considered maintenance. Pool supplies, ground supplies. Then we have electrical, we've got electrical for contract, because when we contract out, it's still a maintenance. And so you still put that in maintenance, but you know it as a contractor, that did the work. Okay, so we still have to pay for it. Um, window contracting, we don't do any of the windows ourselves. Um, we also have window repairs, which we do in-house. We have AC builders, because we have a lot of buildings that have ACs, we have to obviously supply that. We also have AC contractor, which we have it there, we had to have a lot of AC work done last year, and I'm sure we will have some done this year. Uh, and then, we have roof repairs, that'll be a contractor, that's coming up. Tools, maybe tools, so every now and then, we will have to replace the tools that are broken or no use anymore. All our repairs are done ninety percent in-house. Um, and then, of course, gas. This hopefully at some point will be broken up into departments as well, because all our departments use the gas. Maintenance, um, security, uh, our golf. The only ones that don't use it would be just our motel staff and our regular staff, but our housekeeper uses it. So we fill, um, our gas, whether it's diesel or regular gas, um, because we don't take our vehicles off-site. And so we supply that, and that's part of our expense for them to do the work that they do. Um, sprinkler replacements or repairs, we need to do that, that's also budgeted in there. Um, lawn mower, we do have, uh, we just paid uh, we don't have a lawn mower, so, oh, well, actually, we do. Um, I, I think I put it into the golf maintenance, so I just didn't take that out. Maintenance, equipment rental, sometimes we have to rent equipment to help us, because we don't have it. People have asked me, what is forty-yard roll-off? We have roll-offs that the trash, brush, or whatever has to be dumped into. So we need to take it out, this is the landfill. That's what a roll-off is. Sometimes if they're doing work in a building, and they have to trash it out, I call it to trash out or demolish it. You have to have something to put that stuff in. Like we had a burn trailer when we very first got here, we had to have roll-offs to take that whole thing down. And then we had to dispose of that, so that's what those roll-offs are. It's for your white goods, it's for your trash, so we use it quite extensively. And as you can see, yearly, it's about twenty-one thousand dollars. Last year, it was about, I believe it was twenty-six thousand dollars, since we were using another company. We switched companies to save a hundred dollars on each roll-off, and so that saved us about six thousand dollars.
Miss Cavan, regarding white goods. Percentage-wise, if, I know, I understand the rule, if I wanna throw out a refrigerator, I call the office, and the office will tell me the refrigerator cost twenty bucks for us to pick it up.
Yes.
Is that consistent amongst the membership, or? Is that consistent amongst the membership, or are we still picking up stuff even though people don't pay?
We can't leave it there. So if you want the honest answer, yes, picking it up, because we don't want to pour too much trash.
Okay, but.
But we we put it on their, we put it on their account.
Okay, so people are, members are responsible for calling the office to pick up your refrigerator, stove, oven, beds. That is an added cost for the to be taken off the fort in the roll-ups.
Because we don't get that early.
Now, again, I have no opposition to that. The fort should not look like a dump.
Yes.
So if we are picking it up and putting it on their account, that's a very good practice.
Yes. Um, uniforms. Um, I've been buying uniforms for staff because I want them to look professional. The maintenance doesn't say that for very long. After about a week, they're all three, you can take them, you know, rhyme out, but I think it's very important that, you know, they have that. Um, now again, here's the maintenance cost for payroll. This is all on there. This is the maintenance and also the utilities uh, for the whole maintenance building, which includes the art studio, because it's all one item. They can't separate the meters or the art studio. So we raised their rental to offset, because when I first got here, I I did an analysis of what the water and electricity costs. Um, and so we did raise the rent for that to offset that. We're not giving them that to make money. We're giving them that because they're members and it's the place for them to use their art and have it, but we also don't want to pay off pocket either. And they do a lot of work there. They've done a lot of um uh, upgrades and everything out of pocket, so it's a win-win situation. Any questions on that? So altogether, our maintenance is four hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. On golf course. Um, I won't go through all of it, because you have the paper, but you can see what we need for the course itself. Hempels, fuel, sand, slime, tires, topsoil. And then, of course, we've got your uniforms and then the payroll on there. Total for our golf course only is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand six thirty-five. This probably won't have been a cut lot, but it makes sense.
I don't see the lawn mower lease on the golf course. And also, um, like on the on the agenda for the upcoming regular maintenance, golf course, John Deere tractor repair, it's eighty-five hundred. I don't see like a quick answer.
Yeah, that's um, this is this is your budget.
Well, I know. Okay, so you don't.
And Travis did know we should put the lease, because we only have five more months in there at six ninety-six. I don't want to say that honestly, but he said that it was on a liability and he needs to talk to Coggins to make sure that we want to put it in the expense.
So then, like, just get the John Deere tractor repair, even pretty much, right? Do you think it's worth adding a equipment repair for golf course separately for things like that?
So we have um, on here. Let's see.
Did it fall under golf miscellaneous?
Yeah, golf miscellaneous, we have about five thousand dollars in there. Uh, it it could be something that we definitely increase. Um, it's so hard to know what every repairs that it costs. I could put ten thousand dollars in there, we may not use it. But it is very expensive to afford these requirements. But I did put that in there now because we're still in our fiscal year this year. Um, and that could maybe be a repair that comes out of another fund-up, but that would be up to the board.
I know this doesn't even be part of the budget, but doesn't the uh golf club members save the membership a lot of money?
They do.
An estimate, estimate? Do you have an estimate?
Thousands. I'm gonna say David Mann and now Kevin, who's five oh one three C. They have thousands of dollars. They have tournaments just put back into the golf course. Um, they're amazing, and it has saved us. They bought equipment for them. They repaired itself. They bought sand, but we don't have seen any funds to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can we get an idea of what they do? I'm just saying that, yes, I know that they do.
You have a mind.
The future, I'm just wondering if because they are.
They can't hear you on the TV.
Sorry. Okay, sorry. Um, I was just saying, at the golf club and all volunteers at the golf course do a nice job. I know that. Uh, and they do save thousands, so it's wonderful, but I'm wondering if we get a, like, any sort of details or reporting on what they do and what they say, because in the future, if at some point the club is no longer active or whatever, it would be nice, you know.
No, that's a good question, and it's something that I can talk to both committees um, that they can provide us, so that way it can be in our report when I do my general manager of what they've done. I usually say it, but I don't really point it out that maybe did it. I kind of just put it out there, but I think that's a that's a good question. All right, so any any other questions? Answers? Oh. Um, okay, so the expense of the golf course, hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. And now the creekside, and so obviously we have apparel, we have DirecTV. We have essential play items, which is like your tees, your golf balls, your clubs. Um, food, drink purchases, golf cart supplies, merchant fees, miscellaneous merchant merchandise that we have. And then we have our office expense. Um, we have the ice machine maintenance, uniforms, and then, of course, we've also added, again, their pay on here, the wages, utilities, um, water. And now I don't have the insurance and property taxes. That's like something I said I have to work on to pull that out from our whole total taxes to go on each department. Now I'll have to work with the tax office if they've got that separate. Um, but altogether for the creekside, it's about ninety-three thousand two hundred and thirty dollars in expenses. Um, our hunting expenses. We have blind replacement, which my volunteers, uh, play couple and leave, just rebuilt five new from the ground up, um, blinds, because we have not done anything with those blinds in over twenty-five years. And when the amount of money that, and when they come to um hunt, uh, we wouldn't bring more people. We could allow people to use it, I have money. And they love to hunt here because of the question of service, and they just love the sport. And so we would make sure we're providing um, that how do I want to say it?
Service.
Service. And we also are going to probably raise our costs for hunting as well, because we did improve, we made improvements. When you make improvements, you will raise the price. I have not worked that into this because we haven't finalized that, and I just wanted to put it out there.
One quick, one quick question regarding Dottie. Can you give me an estimate, maybe five thousand, maybe ten thousand, more or less, or less than ten thousand? How much these two volunteers have saved the fort, because they're not, is there no labor cost involved in this?
I'm gonna say at least ten thousand.
At least.
At least.
Thank you.
I I have a question. Have we thought about on our money during uh during uh, instead of just the day rates, have a yearly lease rate? Some of these people would pay by the year, and I know the latest around here of uh, five thousand or more a year.
That's a great question, Sharon. So let me tell you what we are working on. When the motel is fixed, we want to do packages for our hunters. All right, which would include the hunt, it'll include a discount on the motel stay. Um, we're also working on, which we've been working on a while, is um, memberships uh, for people to get six-month memberships. Um, I sent it in a while ago, but because it was about the same as what our memberships um, pay now. People wanted it to be higher, and so we're working on that rate. People keep asking me for that six-month membership because they want to use it. And so as soon as I can get uh finalized and the board approves it and the members are good with that, we'll be able to offer that as well. And we can look at yearly lease too. We'd have to come up with a whole design for that, but it's it's a very good question. Any more questions, Jess?
That's a good idea, Sharon.
Yeah, it is. It is a really good idea.
Okay.
And have we projected what that does to our wildlife? Oh, yes, we have the Texas. I have that one covered, Pam. So our park and recs, um, and our rangers come out here on maybe a few times a year, and they do a whole analysis of the amount of deer that we have. We have all that information, which we can share with everybody. They tell us what we need to thin out, um, what we need to keep, how it affects our ecological system, everything, so that we are very covered on that.
Yeah, we would want to burst on that before we vote on decisions on having leases.
You bet.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Right, and then so let's uh, so altogether, those expenses come out to about eight thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, if you think about it. For what we brought in, a hundred and fifteen thousand, and it's only costing us like eighty-six hundred dollars. That's a win-win for me. Um, all right, security expenses. So we've got background checks in house, building maintenance decals. Our decals for our members are quite costly, um, but you know what? We need to have that. We do, we have the um, drug testing. Uh, we need to get from the flags that we have, which are very expensive. We have a flag that I believe costs almost a thousand dollars to paint, I guess, if we have. I know that the flags that are around the empty saddle. Let me see, I think they have these on here, flags. They cost us, they're very expensive. About two thousand dollars just to replace those flags on the empty saddle. Um, so we have it budgeted in. Um, we have car hangers, supplies, obviously, tires, uniforms, vehicle repairs. We want to change the golf cart's battery to lithium, because then we don't have to service it with water anymore, and it will last years compared to what the batteries are now. And it will hold a charge much longer than what we're using. Um, we still have Protel up there, so we have to pay that on a quarterly basis. And then, of course, we have our security, um, wages, federal income tax, and then we also have the utilities, which is such a small um, little building, it really doesn't cost a lot to maintain, yeah. So altogether, our biggest costs are stickers, and our biggest costs are the flags. And that comes out to two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Ms. Cavender, uh, since many of the members are retired military, I think there are people who donate for those flags or.
They used to.
They used to, so retired military folks, we donations for those flags, that'd be a big help.
Thank you. Have you replaced those flags by the saddle already?
Um, not yet.
Will we have to buy them or?
No, but I will. That's why it's in the budget. They they will probably last longer than a year, but they're.
That means you can't take donations for next year's budget for the flags.
If you want to donate, you go ahead and ask. Okay, um, motel. So we've got uniforms for housekeeping, cleaning supplies, coffee for the rooms, pest control, toiletries for the rooms, we have the hotel system that we currently use, uniforms, um, for.
What is that? Hotel system, what is that?
That's what they use to make the reservations for the hotel.
Oh. Soft.
And then, um, yeah, I have uniforms on here twice. So one, I didn't buy the girls jackets last year. We just bought them shirts. I would like to buy them winter jackets this year, so I have that on there. Uh, so in case you're wondering why I have uniforms on here twice. And then, then this is our gross pay. Again, um, insurance, property taxes are not there, but we do have sales tax. And then this is the wifi that is done for the motel, which honestly, for the motel, is not that bad for all thirty-eight rooms at all. Any questions on the motel?
On the motel, we have had to shut down the top floor. Yes, and have you had to turn away any reservations?
Well, we have um, somebody coming up, which I haven't said anything. I found out Friday. They want to rent the whole hotel on April thirtieth to May fifth, top and bottom, for twenty-twenty-six. Is that, I don't know who we'll be able to do.
We're shooting for March.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have groups coming up. That's a group that's coming up.
Yes, and we have hunting groups that come in. We have religious groups that come in. Every year, the women's religious group comes in and they, it's members.
Women's X.
Yeah, and then they also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'm looking at the the different months with the spikes, like the November and May. November being nineteen thousand five fifty-one, May being seventeen, seven twenty-four, those being our biggest uh, two months in the year projected, and I'm assuming off the past, so I'm assuming these are the event dates we're talking about with the occupancy, is that correct?
Yes.
So, okay, so, well, the higher number being hopefully for seventeen, seven, May being full occupancy, right?
Were you on the income portion?
I'm living, I'm living. So, hotel expense, uh, that's supposed to be.
Yeah, some of those.
So we're paying for during those two months, so that's still the peak season, so I have to look at the income, but uh, the overall question. If we know those are our months to shoot for, then we have a deadline for cheaper fares to include in the cost. But that also shows us that all the other months of the year, at least just looking at your expense, if I'm using gross pay as a reflection of occupancy, then I can say that those two months are peak, and and below that is almost fifty percent less, which is arguably half occupancy. Okay, so so we're looking at the two months for occupancy, the other ones, I mean, some of them go over. Again, I'm just looking at how we pay our employees, which is a reflection of the occupancy.
And just FYI, um, due to William and the um, additional help that we are having with Elsa. She's been kept on full-time, so she can work on that, but eventually she will go down to part-time two, three days a week, so that will cut our costs, but because I don't have the projection yet.
Well, it's it's not a cost comment. I'm just trying to put together the hotel revenue expense.
Okay.
For the repair for the deadline, as that's.
Oh, that, yes, okay, yes, yes. No, and I, that's the first time I've ever had anybody call since I've been there too much rent the whole building. So.
That's good news.
Yeah, it is very good news.
So I have a question. Uh, you said had also the veteran, our child, is that her choice or?
No, it's my choice. Um. Okay, so do you understand why I don't share correctly?
I I don't, you didn't say why.
So if we're slow, we don't want to pay to full-time friends and people. That's when if we're, you know, because we only have the model, we would want to reduce costs, and that would be because we're not as busy if we were full, full function. So we would have to reduce costs of labor for that. So hopefully, we won't have to, because if we get the whole open and we get full, maybe we'll be really busy and.
Yeah, I know, um, I just didn't know if there was a better position that should do.
Excuse me? I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we, what, can we not have personnel discussions?
Oh, yeah.
Here, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't.
No, it's okay.
I just say.
I understand. Yeah, I understand. I was, yeah, I was just curious. Okay, thank you. All right, um, any questions on the motel?
The, it looks. Um, it looks like the motel income, room rental for March is great. Um, and I, yeah. Uh, I can't remember what you were just saying, but um.
Are you on income or expense?
So income, motel room rental income, hold on. For March, looks to be, that's. For March looks to be, that's fifty-six thousand dollars-ish. Compared to the other months, which are about anywhere from eight thousand to seventy thousand.
Right.
And so, but on the expense side, we've got the sales tax, which. Which is the occupancy tax, which is due to state, which is seven percent, I believe, of room rental. So it doesn't look like we account for that big jump there, so just want to. My life, I thought it might need to be, yeah. In March, it should have been to give seven percent, I think, right, fifty-six thousand.
Is that more than a quarter?
Okay.
Fifty-seven thousand.
I'm putting that down, thank you. Did you have a question?
No, I'm just showing.
I was asking where was it?
Okay, so we're back on, okay, any more questions about the motel? And again, and this is a preliminary, so there's going to be some changes, just so you know. All right, so we'll go to the RV part. Basically about the same as the motel, you've got your painting, your office supplies, pest control, repairs, uniform. They use this, if you notice the hotel right here, we had it for one quarter. Because we have a new program that we're going to be using camps, camp cell. And so we will not be using the hotel anymore. Camp cell again, um, I had mentioned it in our board meeting last month. Um, it is a, just for the RV part alone, so they can function separately. Not have to rely on the hotel or the motel, because it didn't work together very well. And they'll make, the, the amount that comes out of there is based on people that book online. So when they book online, they take a three percent um cost out of that booking and that's how they get paid. We're using camp cell, they do the marketing, anybody can go online and book. Um, they have websites, now they use the marketing portion, it's a ten percent cost. Uh, which finally means, because it's going to be all automatic, we have a credit card that we will use through there. So all that is, is going to be very nice, it is a great program. We did training for it the other day, you'll be able to look at the sites, you'll be able to pick your site, you'll be able to book your site. And it has reports that we can pull that give us analysis on our peak season. That can help us maybe change prices for them. And so there's a lot of things that we're going to be able to utilize with that and the cost is superior. Um, and then of course, the pay there, we've only, we only really have three people that work out there. We have, we have manager, and then we have two um employees out there. And so, year-to-date, or I mean, projected is a hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred thirty-nine. And then, what people that I could not put into the departments is within this. So then that way you see all of the costs are in there. So what we didn't have that I didn't break out in the other departments is, we have grandfathered employees that were higher than many years. That get a small amount of insurance, life insurance, they pay it, we take it out of their checks. And then we get the O four and then we pay the insurance for that. And then obviously, we've got A P does processing fee. And then the other, we have seasonal salaries that are in here, which are for the pool. Um, and then we have um IT contractor, and we also have. Well, I, IT contractor and consultant is on there. And so that captures what I could not department-wise, does that make sense?
Yes.
What is the consultant? First time, what do we budgeting for this time, consultants?
Tell it.
Do you have a?
Okay, that's not really a close shot budget?
No, there was a consultant.
What about real estate agents, what do we do?
They're in admin.
What, what it says, real estate agents, are we paying the realtor or what do we do on, on the real estate agent?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, she's in this, she's not in that.
Who?
An employee that sells our locks and work with her all the time.
All the staff was there.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, I hope that helps.
Just a very trivial question, how much, just out of curiosity, how much are we paying the young people at the pool per hour? The attendance?
We pay them a eleven dollars a hour.
Thank you.
And if they're high schoolers.
Thank you.
Um, any questions about the rest of the panel? Okay. All right, and lastly, is the utilities. This is also on the leftover utilities that could not be put into the departments that they belong to. Because we have a lot of common area that we also pay. And so, um, we have two electric companies, we have Reliant, we have Real Ground. We also have the Waste, uh, City of Bracket Water and Water and Sewer. So this is the leftover that did not go into the departments to make up the difference of what we have spent and averaged throughout the year. Uh, sixty-nine thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars. So our total expenses, two million, four hundred forty-five dollars, one hundred and thirty-seven, two hundred, two million, four hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Gross income, two million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. Which gives us the deficit of two hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. What has kept us, my observation, what has kept us from seeing this deficit now? Is the employment, the employee retention credit that we received for eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, that has kept us from being in a deficit. As I told you, our biggest expenses is insurance and our property taxes, which is four hundred and seven thousand dollars. So I will need to go back, um, reduce expenses. And then the board will have to make some decisions on other ways that we can convert this to a, and so the red to a black.
Isn't our biggest expenses payroll, which is a bit more than any of the pensions?
No, it's been reduced so many times, it's probably the lowest it's ever been. We can't, we cannot operate on any more reductions in payroll. Um, so, I wanted to give everybody the whole picture. Those are all the expenses, everything that I can take out of our books is on there. Um, obviously, we need to be treated. Does anybody have any questions? I do want.
I have an observation.
Yes, sir.
Um, this is again a preliminary budget that you presented. This is my fifth year on the board, I've lived on the floor for twenty years, and I can assure you, this is the most detailed preliminary budget I have ever heard. I, I'm, I'm floored, to be honest with you. We, we covered something last year, Jason, I don't think it was this big deal.
It was not.
It's on, um, and years previous, no comment, but we're here to, this is where we are today, folks. And uh, I know everyone has, many members have many concerns about many things on the forge. We are trying to address them one at a time, slowly, and a, and a regret that we don't, we're not able to do them as quick as possible. But this is the financial situation, the current financial situation, it probably will change a little bit by September, because we're going to adopt the. Our plan is to adopt the budget in September. And um. Next week, the board, it's on your agenda, will, will make a decision whether H O A, our membership residential piece, might go up. Now, Jason, what is the percentage again, that's might go up?
The number here says two point seven one, it could be the, the, the max, the highest of two point five percent or the CPI index.
Are we figuring out more or less what that would be in a cost? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can you tell me?
Yeah, I, the two point seven one is already in, but.
Okay, oh, it is, for next year, okay, so even, so on the anticipation that the board might increase the H O E fees. It's already in the budget and we're still two hundred thousand dollars short.
That's, I mean, just stay there like this, our insurance, one of our highest things, went up ten percent. How much you think the taxes are going to, they go up every year. You can't control those, I mean, maybe we can get the insurance lower, but maybe if we win the tax protests or whatnot, but those are almost uncontrollable rates. And are going up every time.
At every, at every meeting, I urge everyone to do what you can regarding, I implore everyone to do the best they can to volunteer. And do what they can to help out the forge. I realize it's a choice, we can either participate or not participate. We're all volunteers, we're all volunteers, we're all members. I have one membership, and then you have one membership or two membership? One, you have how many memberships?
Thirteen.
How many memberships? Two, and I believe Mr. Wiley had either six or seven. We're all members and we're all paid, sir?
I think he has six.
Okay, he has six. Folks, we're all paid, we're all affected. You know, I have a big crack on my street and the streets weren't even addressed. You know, so I might have to put dirt in it myself, I mean, it's just what it is, it is what it is. I um, I didn't expect the preliminary budget to be incredibly rosy, but it's just the reality. And I, and I wish, and I hope that the membership can be um, can be more involved. Ask us questions in person and we can get more clarification or ask Ms. Cavender for clarification. There's too much misinformation, how it is to be, it's unfortunate, very, very unfortunate. But it's a free country and freedom of speech is alive and well at Fort Clark Springs and I thank God for that every day. Anything else?
Yeah, I was going to, but as I know the time, I would like to share the last.
Go ahead.
Because you all asked about it.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask on the question of the delinquency.
Oh, I'm, I'm glad you asked that. If, once, once we have building completed and all the balances are in there, now we can start doing this prior. If we can get our delinquency collected, that will help immensely. And, and thank you for bringing that up, I had it on my notes to talk about, but I'm sorry, yes. We've got a lot of delinquency out there, um, and that is a decision that I'm looking at filling to help with that and that will really help us. I can't hear.
I think Sharon Wolf is already working on that.
I, I'm working on, I'm, I'm working on the return ballots, just the ones that are returned, on the return ballots. And I have found some on the return ballots that are paying their taxes at the appraisal district, but they're not paying us. And when I get a spreadsheet together from the return ballots, I'll be giving it to Ms. Cavender or her, her staff to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Okay, you were trying to talk to me, so I didn't listen.
Las Mores is just Dickman Hall, correct?
Dickman Hall, yes. So, um, I was hoping Daniel was going to be here today if you, you know, wanted to talk on this, but this is just Dickman Hall. This is cost sales, expenses, I won't go through every line, but you can see it, if you want me to, I'm just going to see what I'm trying to do. But at the end of the day, his net operating um income will be fifteen thousand dollars annual for the year. Now, what he did on there is he has kept for each year, the percentage of what, whether it went down or whether it went up. And that's what he based his financials on. He did an amazing job of keeping track of this growth, projecting out, um. The only thing that is not under that I have to add is the alcohol that sold at the Creekside has to be questioned a loss more. So I have to add that as other income. That's why we have the Lost Smores Corporation to be able to sell liquor, because we could not do a true nonprofit, which is us. Okay, um, any questions? This one is not this program, because you don't need just Dickman, it's their wages, utilities, their payroll and everything. And at the end, they will bring in fifty thousand dollars. Any questions, Mr. Timothy?
No. It's too small. Too small.
It, it is, but are you saying we should have more people in there, they're drink a lot? Now, he's, he's done really well and he's done more events, which are bringing in more money. And he has plans to bring in, to do more events. But for those of you that may have been able to go to the concert for the twenty-fourth of July, that was an amazing event, brought in a lot of business. And we plan to do more things like that. So the more things that we do to showcase our menus and areas that we have that are amazing, the more we can bring in income to help out our bottom line. So I hope.
Ms. Cavender, can you give, just, I'm sorry, I, I haven't caught it here.
Sure.
Dickman Hall, we're, we're making a little bit of money or we're not making? Fifteen grand, that's, okay.
Project for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and he has all of the percentages that he has kept track of uh throughout the years. Um, and he's done a very good job doing this. I had him do this budget because he works there. And really, as a manager, the manager should be able to understand where their money is coming from and where their expenses are. And he does know it from that, and so he did a amazing job doing this, I'm going to give you a few of his, he'll sway for this.
For the next budget, for the next year, do you plan on getting other department heads to do a significant contribution to this? With their knowledge of working the motel, the security, maintenance and everyone else?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
It will take a lot of training, but yes, sir. All right. My question to you all, because you've been asking me questions, were you happy with the detail that was put out?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Were you satisfied with the communication that I gave? Could I do better next time?
Communication on this?
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh.
So I would think that next time, you will have gone through, I mean, I've done budgets like this before for projects and. Until you really get in the, the nitty-gritty like you're doing, you don't understand, you, you know, and you probably. Uh, I mean, there's more to do and like you, you, you came up with some places, though I didn't put this here, or I didn't put that there, or I put that over there, because I didn't really have a place to put it. Um, but I think that once, once this base detail budget is set up. Um, then you'll have the foundation to keep moving crime. One of the things I would say, um, in budgets that I've done for operations and management for. If I thought I was going to have, if I anticipated or I had factual information about needing to do a repair or boxes of equipment or something like that. I would, I would identify, in, in my job, I would identify that and have that in there. So that my boss was not going to be surprised.
Sure.
You know, so I'm just, then it's like you had several opportunities where you know something's coming up, but you didn't put it in this preliminary. And maybe that's something you could talk about with your advisors and see if that's something to consider when you get to the final budget for, for this upcoming year. Um, but those are just my suggestions.
Sure, and just to answer that um suggestion, because they're not going into fiscal year for next year, they're this year's.
Okay.
Costs, that's why I did it, but I understand exactly what you're saying, yeah. Okay, any?
And are we going to, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I'm going to get the feedback. Well, I appreciate that you all came out today on a Saturday, so listen to me talk, and I know you have a question, but I just wanted to say thank you.
I, I have a question up to her.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I, I was just uh curious, we've been talking about a reserve study.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are we going to be able to put that, are, are you going to put that in the budget? Are we going to work it into the budget so we can have, she was talking about um knowing what's going to break and being able to put that in there. And that's the purpose of a reserve study.
Well, that's a decision we'll have to have with the court, maybe someone. Well, that's a decision we'll have to have with the court based on what the bottom line is right here and what, what area we would take that funds out of.
I, I want to add to this as my entire, uh, existence on this board has. Has been part of, uh, working on the motel project, which is a capital improvement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't. I don't, I don't recall seeing a capital improvement budget and the reality is, uh, we're in the position wherein. Assuming there has not been capital improvement budget, that's anything we cost us to maintain regularly and budget for. Let's wait for the, uh. Catastrophic event. So. I, I think that needs to be included because we, we know we're going to spend money. We know we're gonna spend money on the motel to get up. And I've done everything I can to keep that cost. No, we're, we're getting close to. Assuming approval, the process to, to really understand what that is. But, uh, I mean, this really pertains to all of our buildings that we maintain. There just, there just has to be a capital budget.
I understand.
Um. What is the membership fee right now?
Fifty-four, fifty-one. And then you.
Fifty-four, fifty-one?
Fifty-four, fifty.
Okay, and what is a residential?
Um, well, it's four, forty-nine. So altogether, it's a hundred and two fifty.
Residential is forty-eight and, and the membership is forty-nine, a dollar thirty-eight, so it's four point three dollars.
My question is, the membership, how much is it gonna go up if, if the fees increased? That's what I don't know.
Okay.
Do you know?
It goes up two point seven percent. So it'd go up a dollar forty-seven.
Dollar for membership. For membership and for the residential?
We did it on, yeah, forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
We'll go up a dollar thirty.
Dollar thirty. And that's more or less two dollars and seventy-seven cents. That's what it's looking like right now.
Yes.
Or that's, okay. So our fees will go up. The highest point is two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Do it.
We'll have to do it. We're, we're gonna discuss it next hour.
I know.
I mean, it's included in the budget now, so it's, it hasn't been, uh, worn out yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the board?
Is there a lot of delinquencies?
Yes.
There's, uh, we paid, I, I speak loud enough.
They can't hear you.
El TV?
Sorry.
They cannot hear you.
Okay, so there is a lot of delinquencies. There's a lot of legal fees. Why have they not gone after some of those people? How long does it take for them? To go after somebody? Uh, the reason I'm saying this is. We've been here for a while, so, but we're weakened. The lot right next to us. From the tax office, from the appraisal district, okay, was the name of the person. We contacted him and said, and told him they owe so much money. They paid up over there, but they haven't paid here, which is what you addressed it or somebody addressed. That they're paying at the tax office, but they're not paying here. So their current over there. But they're into the thousands here, yet. I can't buy from them from the appraisal board. I can buy from here because the legal department has not gone after. What's the period?
I don't know which one that is. I know Mort is where he lives, but I just don't know the line.
Yes, please.
No, I'm not gonna give the lot number. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, right, because of the people to protect their identity. But, uh, I'd like to. Years and years.
All right, I'd like to reply kind of generically to that, um, because since, since I've been on the board, we, uh. We have voted on pursuing a property, uh, what would you call that?
Leans?
Leans. We, we pursued actually on several properties going after leans, which is there is, there is a multi-step process. And we have to get to a point to establish going after a lien and, um. If you take note of our, our, our meeting minutes of executive session, you would see. We can't decide it directly, but enforce no actions and that's, that's actually us pursuing liens on the properties you're talking about. So it is a process. We, we, as long as I've been here or it's been a, a topic. Every month that I've been here for the, whatever, five months or so, when we are pursuing it on property. So we, we are actively doing that. Um, and, and the, the reality is that tho- those properties then, uh, belong. When that cycle completes, they then belong to, to the Ford. Uh, the Ford gets them back, in which case the Ford decides how to pursue, you know, selling them, whatever we do with them. So that's where we are as of last month's meeting.
Well, I unders- I understand that, but. The timeframe, some of the properties are over ten years. And nothing is done about it.
Right. Well, I'm saying this Ford is pursuing action on the properties. I can't see it ten years ago.
Have intention to aggressively pursue this in the near future by very aggressively.
We just got a hundred.
You don't deserve to be paying money. And other people are not paying money. Who's picking up the slack? You are, I am, we are. That's not acceptable. Where we are, you know, we've talked to different attorneys. We've got a new attorney. We've got someone who was gonna handle collections. That didn't work. So now I think we're gonna hire someone for that. Gonna hire someone to get the vote into that to start sending the two O nine letters. It's like thirty days. You send a letter, then you wait another time, you send another letter. Do another step, then you give it to the attorney, goes a lien and, you know, there's, there's, it's a process and we definitely need to get our ball rolling.
You did.
Okay, the ball's rolling a little.
Okay, so collections were done in the past. We did, we were not doing collections up until about. Twenty, 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 twenty-one. Alan Peterson was here. We were doing, we had someone who was actively an employee, who was actively working on collections. And then Alan left and then she left. And so she has not been here and I, I think. Mamo, you can probably say more about this. I don't know so much about Jason, but you were on the board. When she left. And she was not replaced. Okay, so now we go up to this new board we have now as of March. And they are now reactivating that process.
You know, sir, you make a great point that we can't buy that property. Maybe you want to. Maybe you wanna start paying your assessments, but you can't because it's, it's someone else's now. I personally have bought every property that came available next to any of the properties that I, I, I would sweep them up. I will pay myself on time, the basic automated care and stuff. And you probably will do the same if you have that opportunity. And many members will do that if they have a chance to get a double lot, have a bigger yard, put a fence. Put another house on there, rent it, whatever they wanna do. So that's, that's, that's what we need to do.
What, what I can say is, you bring up a great point, sir. So that's always been a real contention of mine. We, we can fix the past, but it has to be now. Yeah, so though it's passed and it's still there, we can fix it now. And that's what our plan is because we, I don't want to have to. I don't wanna have to be angry for somebody who's not being.
Just remember.
So we, we are, that is number one on my item, what we're working on. We do have a HOA lawyer. It's awesome, um, who will supply the process.
I'd like to say too, on these return ballots, there's just a lot of, uh, patterns that are coming to light. And, um. One of the patterns is that I have found on the return ballots and checking with, um. CAD that they, the same thing's happening. They're paying CAD, but they're not paying us. So Jason is putting a dashboard together for me. Once I get the pattern. Um. So that we can run all the members. That are in our building. Through a pattern and find out if there are others other than just the return ballot ones that I have. So we're actively working on that. We're very, very fortunate to have a software engineer on the board. That knows how to put these programs together. Uh, the program he put together for me. Um, uh, clearing these, um, ballots has saved me tons of time. Uh, from being able to. Click on the property and then click it goes automatically to the, he's linked down in the appraisal district. And I can just go back and forth. It's saved a lot of time. So we need to really give him credit. This could have cost us thousands and thousands of dollars to hire a software engineer to do what he's doing with building. And they're helping us clear these things.
So maybe Bill knows. I don't know, but you got here. But so one of the things that we noticed was some, a lot of these return ballots. In like nineteen eighty-four, someone owned them. But then in nineteen ninety-six, not being transferred, they're all rights and everything else to. Fort Clark Springs in nineteen ninety-six. But so in, in, in the, in the, and the taxes were paid up until two thousand and seven. But when I, I called the appraisal district and I asked them, what's going on with these lots? It says that everything was transferred to Ford. But you're showing so-and-so is the owner. And then it's showing who's paying those taxes since it's up to two thousand and seven. It said, well, the Ford was paying the taxes up to two thousand and seven. So the owner from nineteen eighty-four. Is now who shows owns it, but the last deed history shows that it was transferred to the Ford. But some reason in two thousand and seven, the Ford stopped paying the taxes and they bumped it to the person that owned it back in the day. So. Who owns it? I don't know. I called them, I called the tax officer. They were gonna answer me, but I forgot to call back later in the afternoon, but Monday I'm gonna call her. Cause that could be hundreds. I mean, she's already found like fifty just in the return ballots. So. Something happened in nineteen eighty-four, nineteen ninety-six and two thousand and seven, and we're not aware of. What kind of paperwork was done or what happened. And I'll be interested to find that out.
Yeah, I have three hundred and eighty-three return ballots with no full reading addresses. And, um, some of these addresses, um, we can update, um, what CAD has for an address. And that's how I'm finding these that are paying their taxes on the lots for CAD, but they're not paying us. So. Jason's been a tremendous help and we are proactive. It's taking, it was taking me a lot of time to get, uh. The member numbers off of the return ballots, um. And then Jason put my dashboard together where I could flip back and forth between the property and CAD and. And get things settled. But we are actively, actively working on some collections because there are a lot of collections. And there are a lot of lanes we need to be following. For some reason, back in the day, they were enforcing these people. And they just. Went off the radar. Uh, so it's a lot of cleanup. It's a lot of things, but with Jason's. Knowledge of being able to automate a lot of this stuff. Uh, hopefully we'll be able to get on trash and get a lot of things cleaned up. And as far as filing lanes, there's a lot of things that we could do in-house. If we get the paperwork from the. Attorneys that we could just fill out ourselves and file the lien, um. I have a condo at Masters condos and our treasurer does that. When we, we have filed liens. We have all the paperwork up there. We just file liens, uh, on past assessments at the condos. And I know it could be done here too. And we can save money in that direction. So there are a lot of things we're looking into, um. And, uh, we are the, this board is being very proactive on trying to get some of these things cleaned up that were. Not, that fell through the cracks for whatever reason.
Any more questions, folks?
Thank you.
It is, uh, Ted fifty-two. Will now adjourn to me. Thank you very much. See you next time.